December fourteenth, that's scary. Very scary.
What's that?
Well, you can't tell how far along we are with buying you Christmas presents.
Tell me that to your wife.
How are you doing?
Hey, I want to talk to you about doing a ribbon cutting in Mounier Park. You can stripe it. You feel like doing that?
When?
I don't know. Probably until January, you start to stripe.
Okay.
But I want to put something together.
Okay.
And I want to talk about what Marcus and Robert Morgan and Guy have to do. They ain't working for me. They're giving them all the stuff. They have the water.
Uh, Barrett David Boy.
He might have to talk to Lacy.
Another meeting, another talk?
Right now, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Does he get, does he get to go in and hand it in?
Oh, yeah, he sees some stuff. I mean, very much. He gets inspired by just little videos.
Let me give you some advice. Buy everything he wants, as much as he wants. If you know what.
You can play with the box.
When they get older, when they get older, when they get older enough, the, the hundred dollars you spend this Christmas is closer to a million, okay? You'll be, there'll be a day that you'll look back and say, man, that Xbox was cheap. Man, I could, I could have bought two of them.
Does anybody need fruit? I found on Mount Johnston, Nevada, Chris Pringle Bridge. Santa's just in Nevada, part of the area.
He's summer's there.
There was only two roads up there. And one was Chris Pringle.
It's, uh, it's me, speaking.
You sound like that, that head's up. We ain't gonna lose no sleep.
Hammer City Council Public Hearing Agenda, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, five thirty P.M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Divatario?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Present.
There's no items on that agenda. We'll move right into the Hammer City Council Regular Session Agenda, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Divatario?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Here.
Move right into our prayer. I ask that we take a moment of silence and recognition of those that have lost their lives in that daily storm on the other day. Most gracious love, eternal Father, we thank you on tonight. We give you glory and honor and praise, Father God, just thanking you for who you are. Thanking you, Father, that you woke us up this morning and started us on our way. Father God, if there's ever time we need you, we need you right now. Father God, we ask that you continue to look down upon us, continue to give us health and strength and activity and use of our limbs. Father God, I ask you to continue to bless this council, continue to bless their family, continue to strengthen them as we continue to move forward and serve the citizens in our city. Ask you to continue to bless our American administration right now, Father God, to continue to give them knowledge from on high to move forward. Ask you to continue to bless our fire department and our city policemen, continue to protect them as they continue to serve and protect our citizens right now. Father God, we just thank you right now because we are nothing without you. And Father God, I ask you tonight that everything be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight. Where you will get all the glory, you will get all the honor and all the praise. Father God, we're moving into this part of this season right now where we acknowledge gift giving, but we know that you were the, your darling son was the ultimate gift that was given for us right now. For that, we just say thank you. Father God, we ask you to move right now, shine that light up on our paths and the others may see the good work that you continue to do through us and continue to move our city forward. We thank you for it all right now. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. At this time, I ask all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute as we move forward into our pleasure leashes. A pleasure leashes to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move down into our reports, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the season, right? Christmas is upon us. Uh, the lights are out downtown Hammond throughout the city. And, um, in our park, Zumaire Park, Wildlife and Fisheries just put two hundred and thirty channel catfish in the pond. Uh, ten of those fish are tagged. So, uh, you'll be able to get, the Cracker Barrel was good enough also for our Christmas, for on Saturday, Friday, what is it? Saturday and Sunday, we're gonna have the train out. We've had a little problems with the train, but we're trying to, we're gonna work on it tomorrow. So hopefully the train will be running. Cracker Barrel was good enough to let us borrow a chair for, uh, chair for Santa Claus to get out there and take pictures with the kids. But, um, so the park is ready for everyone to enjoy with your families. Please get out there and do so. And, um, have a merry Christmas to everyone and a safe Christmas. And, uh, thank you all for being here tonight.
You ready for the present, presentation? Mr. Bill Blair?
All ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today.
Good evening.
So. Who's been through redistricting before? Raise your hand. Well, I promise it won't kill you. In fact, it won't be that difficult. You've received the information I provided under our contract. With four of our districts malapportioned, we'll need to restructure the population just a little bit to make sure we comply with the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. But before we get to the details of that, let me introduce myself. My name's Bill Blair. I am usually the demographer for Louisiana Legislature. And you, you may have seen the legislature touring around the state, doing road shows for our state level redistricting. Well, when I signed a contract with Hammond to help you do your redistricting, I become your demographer. So I'm Hammond's demographer tonight. And I'm here to kind of walk us through and walk the public through what this means. I've done this work for twenty-five years, worked for legislate for twenty-five years. I did Hammond's redistricting ten years ago. So I'm fairly familiar with the state, with the city. I also am currently contracted with the school board and the parish council of Tangibahau. And I did them ten years ago, too. So I'm familiar with your, with your parish and your localities. Let me also explain how I work. Um, we at the legislature are a objective, nonpartisan staff. And I will bring that methodology to your redistricting of Hammond as well. I don't come with an agenda. I don't come with partisanship or anything like that. I'm impartial, professional, and only here to protect everyone's reputation, including mine. Okay? So I just went straight away. So. Why do we have to bother doing this redistricting? Well, there's several answers to that. One, federal law. Under the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and several Supreme Court cases have opined that every, after every decennial census, the, every jurisdiction that collects single members has to redraw their districts to meet population equality standards. Now, what does that mean for Hammond? Well, for Hammond, it means your population after the twenty-twenty census declined about four hundred and fifty people. So you have nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four total population in the city. You have five districts, so you divide that nineteen thousand by five, you get around thirty-nine hundred people per district. Okay? Supreme Court tells us you have a five percent wiggle room on either side of that thirty-nine hundred. So plus or minus five percent. So our job will be to equalize population across our five districts so that everyone is within that plus or minus five percent. Now. Your largest district is District Five, it's plus ten, almost plus eleven percent. That sounds like a big number. Okay? But remember, the plus or minus ten percent or five percent is only about a hundred and ninety people on each side of that, so five percent is a hundred and nine people. So it's moving a hundred people here, a hundred people there to try and get us within that population. Okay? So that's, I won't, I won't promise you it's not painful to lose voters or have to gain voters that are not currently in your district, but it isn't going to fundamentally change the nature of your districts. Two, Voting Rights Act. You may or may not be aware that in twenty thirteen, in a court, a Supreme Court case called Shelby, Shelby County v. Holder, the Supreme Court removed all jurisdictions from Section Five of the Voting Rights Act, which means Hammond and any other jurisdiction in the state of Louisiana, much less anywhere in the country, no longer has to submit any voting change, including redistricting plans, to the Department of Justice for pre-clearance. Okay? So. I tell all of my clients, behave, make decisions as if you are still under Section Five of the Voting Rights Act. Because every jurisdiction in this, in this state and in this country is still under what we call Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, which means you must protect minority-majority districts where you can. And our objective here, Hammond currently has two minority-majority districts, with my intention to maintain those to the satisfaction of the membership. You also have a third district, which I would call a competitive district. And we're just gonna have to see how that works with our population shifting, what becomes of that. State law. I think when I submitted my information to you, I included a model ordinance. The state requires, state statute requires Hammond and any other jurisdiction or governing authority to adopt an ordinance acknowledging whether or not they are malapportioned. Since Hammond is, you simply have to pass that ordinance acknowledging such. It's not a redistricting plan, it's just saying, after looking at the twenty-twenty census, we recognize that our population has changed and, and changed enough inside the city that we have to actually undertake redistricting to fix that issue. So what happened in Hammond? You lost about four hundred and thirty-five people from twenty-ten census. So maintain essentially the same population. Your racial makeup changed a bit. To be clear on that. The total white population in twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-ten was forty-eight percent. Total black was forty-eight percent, so evenly matched racially ten years ago. In twenty-twenty, total white is forty-five percent, total black forty-seven percent. So some alterations. Neither black nor white are a majority of the city because of other racial categories. So I imagine the same sort of confection will occur with two minority districts and one competitive black-white district. But that will be for the membership to decide. I should also say, I have not tried to draw anything. It's not my job to come tell you how to draw your district. It's my job to tell you I do that legally. And as such, I will plan to meet with everyone individually, talk about your vision of how Hammond should be. And then we will try and confect a plan that gets all, I'd like to get all five votes, right, for a plan, if we can. What's our timeline? Well, by your Home Rule Charter, you have to adopt an ordinance within six months of your next regularly scheduled election, which is November eighth of twenty-twenty-two, which means we have to be done by, if my math is right, May eighth of twenty-twenty-two, which means because you have to introduce and lie over, we have to get this done no later than April. So we have plenty of time to do it. So at your convenience, and we'll talk about this going forward, I'd like to come down, meet with each of you, and get that process started, I assume after Christmas, really. But if you really want to, we could do it between Christmas and New Year's, because I will be around. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. When drawing the line, so District Two, from I, I see from your report is one of the only ones that, it is the only one that's within the, the
Right.
the amount that it's supposed to have, the, the percentage. If I were to have, and, and District, say for example, District Five, it has the most, we, we border each other. If we were gonna swap, or if I were gonna take some of his district,
Right.
do we both have to agree to that? Or is this a majority council says this is what our new map looks like? Even if he and I were like, no, we don't like that?
It
Just for an example?
It takes three votes. It'll take a majority to pass a plan.
So it doesn't matter that the people who's losing or gaining
Right.
like or don't like the plan?
But in a perfect world, we would like to, if that's, that sort of change has to happen, we would, the three of us sit down together, look at the map, see if we can affect something that makes sense for, for both parties. That's the objective.
I have another question, which is
Absolutely.
District Five is, um, usually the voter, the registered voters are a lot lower than some of the other. And so I've had someone ask me, well, does it matter? I mean, probably some of those census numbers are people who are in the college, who are living in apartments, are not registered to vote there. So your voter registration is way off from what your census shows. Obviously, think that that doesn't matter?
It does not matter.
We can't take that into any type of account?
No, there, there is some, some possibility of removing, um, felons that are in a correctional facility out of your population count. But colleges, military, they can all register to vote if they want to. And because they are inside the city, the Supreme Court considers that to be a equal representation question. And as such, it's just the nature of the game for District Five.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I'll say my question when, when we get one-on-one.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And everything, I'll also say, which just to go without, without saying, but I'll say it here and now anyway. When we have meetings individually, when we talk about your district, that is confidential until you make it not confidential. Okay? I operate the same way we do up in Baton Rouge. So you'll get treated the same way a congressman does, a police, I mean, a, a police jury member, a parish council member, a member of the House or the Senate, so on and so forth. Okay? I take this very seriously.
Have a card or anything to contact information?
I'll have all my information with you.
What now? Yeah, it's on there?
Yes, sir.
Yep, I didn't know if it's direct line was on there or not.
That is my direct line. You can call me anytime or text me anytime.
That'll be good, thank you. So we just contact you when we ready?
I'd like to set up, come down for a day, set up meetings with all five of you if possible, and get to work on this in the next several weeks. So we're not running up against that deadline.
When's that deadline again?
We need to be, we need to have it introduced by the, the first meeting in April. Is that right? Okay, yeah.
One question I have for the administration. I didn't see a price on here nowhere. On how much this here costs in the city of Hammond?
I have a signed contract. We charge you sixteen thousand dollars to do this work. You paid me eight of it to give you the data you have telling you have to reapportion, and you'll give me the other eight once we adopt an ordinance and pass a plan.
All right, thank you.
Which is a pretty good deal considering some of the other consultants, if I do say so myself.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to see y'all.
Any other council reports?
I'm not too sure when, when this is gonna be brought up or not, but I asked Lacy and Robert to get a little update on the lighting. I talked to Robert earlier today. He gave me a good little bit of updates. But Robert, would you be able to just come up real quick, just to tell a little briefly about the streets and everything that I asked about with West Dale and what's, what's taken care of, but Timber Lane and Ruth St. Martin, some concerns about lighting. I think it was the boring contract you're waiting on right now to get someone to bore the wire?
Well, Ruth St. Martin and Timber Lane, we need to get a third quote for the boring. Once that's done in P.O., we can then turn the lights on those lights.
Okay.
We have all the other light fixtures that were damaged from the Hurricane Ida order.
Okay.
They may be still a couple of months to come to get in. So currently we're about five or six lights. Most of them are in Woodbridge yet to be fixed. There's one in Oak Grove that's got a problem that we gotta research. And there's one in Oak Creek also that causes a little problem, gotta be researched. So about eight lights total that we could fix in addition to the ones that we have ordered the parts for.
Along for corn also, along for corn also.
That could be more. Every day there's lights that's going out. So if it's on our list, I'm going by what's been reported to me that we have records home. So if you got any additional ones, you'll please share them with me.
Are we talking about just city lights or energy lights?
Just strictly city lights. We've got dozens, if not more, of energy lights that we're working on. We got a lot of requests in. Uh, we have yet to fully ride the entire city at nighttime determining where lights were that are out. We don't have the ability to track residents that call energy themselves. But, uh, I wouldn't be afraid to say there's probably a hundred lights for energy on new poles that hadn't been reinstated.
Do you, do you want us to have people direct them to the city to go to energy or direct? Because I've been having people go directly to energy.
I would rather, well, we can track them better and stay on energy. Because, you know, energy has not been as fast putting lights back up as they used to. But if I don't know that they requested it, it's hard for me to push when I get to right ear to say, hey, where are we at with this?
Okay.
I mean, they can continue to do so. They can just call and say, I've reported it to energy. But we resubmit emails to energy to follow up, where are we with this?
Perfect.
And they probably aren't doing it as a resident.
So, so as right now, I think you're waiting on some, um, some supplies to come in that you ordered. And in my district that I asked, I think was some fuses, different things, poles to come in. But when they come in, I think it's pretty quickly processed. You said you can knock it out.
Each time, once we get everything in, we'll put all the new poles, all the new fixtures on poles that are standing. Uh, some glasses are broken on some fixtures. It's a hodgepodge. It's quite a bit of stuff that was damaged during the storm. And we're still finding things that we didn't know was damaged when energy pulled a pole behind a house, maybe had a feed to it and they didn't put it back. You know? So we're, we're finding a few things here and there after the fact. But as a, as a rule, we're, we're pretty well caught up. You know, half a dozen lights is expected not to have fixed at any given time. We, we get that many almost every week.
So look, over in, uh, District Three, on Mooney Avenue, we was working on that project, but due to the storm, I know everything was put off. So how long it gonna be before we get that back going?
Well, we had originally discussed picking one of five lights, putting them out and deciding as a council of the group which one we were going to. Decided to just go ahead and put Level One LEDs up. They're bright enough. I don't think there, there, uh, anything wrong with the Level One. So if that's what we all agreed we're gonna do, let's go ahead and make the request to get them changed. I can do that.
You kinda lost me there. You say as a councilman.
We all had originally discussed putting one of all five different level LED lights up on Mooney as a test project.
Uh-huh.
And then we decided after the storm, I wasn't gonna wait on that, go ahead and start putting up LED lights. So I put Level One LED lights up on all new streetlight installations. We're not putting the yellow HPS lights up as a rule. We're putting all new LEDs.
All right, when are we gonna start on it? I'm still lost, uh, when you say, because I know you and I had went out and we picked the poles, we picked the streets.
We picked five different locations for five different levels of LEDs to be at the test project. That kinda got pushed to the back, excuse me, when the storm come through. So instead of trying to pick one of the five, I went ahead and chose Level One LED, which are better than the HPS to get a project started. So all new lights that have been installed on energy poles have been Level One LED. No HPS lights are being installed, which are the yellow lights that nobody likes. So there really no reason to put a Level Five LED on a street. It's just too bright. Level Ones are adequate. They're three times brighter than the standard HPS, in my opinion. So you're getting a white, brilliant light from a Level One, and they're already double the cost of the HPS lights. I don't think we need to spend more money on a higher level LED.
Okay, now, I can talk now. Okay? Uh, your opinion, right? That what you just said, your opinion, I heard you say that. Okay, what's going on in my area? My area is real dark. I'm getting shooting over there pretty much every day. And so I know this is a fact. When it's a dark area, crime gonna take place. And so I done talked to the residents over there, because I know you and I, we talked about the lights, and I would tell them how bright the lights gonna be. And they say, Devine, I mean, whatever it takes, you know? I'm not worried about no bright light, because either for me to get dark curtains or whatever I need to put in my house to keep the lights from the street shining in my house. So, uh, and I heard you say your opinion. And I thought we had discussed that, because we was in the truck, I think it was you and I in the truck riding. I didn't see nobody else in the truck with us. So I, I be lost, and I'm lost because, you know, if something going on in my area, I wanna know about it. You know, uh, you work for the city, and I'm a city councilman. So I would like to know, because we talked about the light by Adrian House, what, what level that light on, the one in front of Adrian House?
A Level Five LED.
And that's too bright for Mooney Avenue?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, well, see, that's where we always have problems at, you know? We all have our own opinions. And, and I thought we had discussed everything.
I just told you that we
I know.
had this conversation, and we decided the council as a whole was gonna decide. But with everything going on, Devine, I just went ahead and put Level Ones up. It's better than putting the HPS up.
Oh, yeah, we, we, I'm saying, we discussed that.
I know, and, and
Yeah.
we agreed to, to let the council decide. But things changed since then. So in order to get lights back on energy poles, I went ahead and made a decision to put Level One LEDs. I mean, it's better than the HPS lights. We can all agree that we don't like the yellow lights.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, you and I had a discussion. And I'm saying, we had talked about several things. But now, you know, you sit here and tell me this here, you know, it's, it's not nothing that we're gonna argue about, but, uh, I'm just wondering how it come like that? Because, you know, I never brought it back to you. Since the storm, everything took place. I never said nothing, because I was kinda waiting, because they had been putting poles down in District Three. So I know what nothing you can do while they putting poles down anyway. So that's why I was quiet about it.
I don't know if we put any new lights on Mooney Avenue in particular, because Mooney Avenue currently had lights, right? We were talking about putting
Yes.
every other pole, changing the light that were currently working to something new. I've been working on lights that had been removed from storms, either poles that were damaged and replaced, or limbs that knocked lights off of existing poles. So the Mooney project really hadn't come up because it has lights currently. I'm more interested in putting lights on poles that don't have lights, or putting lights on energy poles that currently used to be there that aren't there now.
Well, you can't say that. And the reason you can't say that, because on Mooney Avenue, they got lights that was on the pole that done went out due to the storm.
I just told you, I hadn't rode the entire
I know, and I haven't said nothing about it, because I was trying to wait.
So what, what are your expectations? Me to replace every energy pole that had a light on it? We're riding through the city, we taking them as they're calling, we putting them on the list to have them done, energy control when they put them? I don't really understand why there's an issue. We're trying to get them put back. I mean, we hadn't got them all done currently.
Well
I don't even know where they all are. We, we hadn't had a chance to ride the entire city.
Yeah, well, and that's why
Our own streetlights currently.
Well, that's why I sit there and say, I haven't said nothing about it. Okay, the light's just out already. I haven't contacted you because I know what's going on. Not just, not just District Three got lights out, every district got lights out. So that ain't what we was talking about. You know, I was just sitting there saying the levels that you and I had discussed. And so now you sitting there telling me Level One, when we had discussed from Level One to Level Five. You know, I just don't, let me just tell you this here, and you know me, I don't like surprises. So if we doing something, I like to know what's going on. That's all. So, I mean, they got lights out everywhere, so I never called you about no lights.
But you should. I mean, you should let me know where they're the issue, because the request, the sooner they're put in, the sooner they're gonna be addressed. Some of the lights have been requested for weeks through Energy and they hadn't got turned on yet.
Okay, now
You got a list of locations, that's how you meet time, having to ride in nighttime and identify.
Well, once again, we was talking about different levels of the lights. So why would I sit here and tell you about a light? When you don't know if we gonna put level one? Now, when you and I had talked, we talked from level one to level five. That's what we had talked about.
That was planned, that was
And so now, it done come from, from level one to all the one. Ain't no level five. So that what I'm saying, you and I had a discussion, and that what we had discussed. So I'm not gonna tell you about a light that's out until I know what's going on. That's why I haven't called and said anything.
A decision was made to put level one LEDs up on the ones that were being currently installed.
Okay.
Unless we decide as a group, do you wanna up that level to a different level? I'm gonna continue putting level ones. But I mean, I'm, I'm still willing to put the five on the Mooney Avenue and let y'all choose. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna overdo a light need when there's not a call for. I'd rather put three lights up for the price of one. That's my, that's
Okay.
My decision.
Okay, so you saying the price? And we discuss prices, but I get to them in the time come. It's on the agenda. I get to it.
I, I just wanted to update on the lights that are out. So I appreciate you giving me an update on the lights earlier and, and now sort of public knows that pretty much Ruth St. Martin, Timber Lane, they waiting on the Boring contract. And, um, you waiting on some supplies to come in for the rest. And then Lincoln Park had some lights out and Jackson area, well, Jackson Park, so.
There are Energy feed issues that you may request for Energy to hook the power back up.
Okay.
So if you got streetlight location, Energy wooden pole that you know of that had a light prior to the storm? Let us know, we can ribbon that and put a light on it. If you've got light pole that you want new lights on, the standard at every intersection and every other pole, that's what we have done in the past.
Thank you. Pre-update, Robert?
Devine?
Yes.
Let me move forward in something, Frank.
Okay, okay.
Come right back. At this time, I would like to, uh, do an acknowledgement of the Teacher of the Year for the, uh, in the Hammond School District area. Uh, with Amanda Ford come up, Kimberly Montgomery, Sean Sanders, Latasha Duplessis, Holly Rocker, and Christine, Kathleen, I'm sorry. Kathleen, Catherine, I'm sorry. Inzenman?
Inzenia.
Inzenia? Sorry for messing your name up.
Captain? Amanda? This is a certificate of appreciation hereby presented to Amanda Ford in recognition of outstanding achievement in education. For Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty one, we're looking for a name, uh, we're looking for a name to, uh, December the fourteenth, twenty twenty one, Hammond City Council, District One. Kimberly Montgomery? Certificate of appreciation, appreciation hereby presented to Kimberly Montgomery in recognition of outstanding achievement in education for Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, we're looking for a name, uh, we're looking for a name to, uh, December the fourteenth, twenty twenty one, Hammond City Council, District One. Certificate of appreciation hereby presented to Sean Sanders in recognition of outstanding achievement in education, Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty one, Hammond High Magic School, December the fourteenth, Hammond City Council, District One. Contra Depressives? Certificate of appreciation hereby presented to Contra Depressive in recognition of outstanding achievement in education for Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty one, Hammond Eastside Magic School, December the fourteenth, twenty twenty one, Hammond City Council, District One. Certificate of appreciation presented to Holly Rocker in recognition of outstanding achievement in education, Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty one, Hammond Eastside Magic School, December the fourteenth, twenty twenty one, Hammond City Council, District One. Yeah, I take this time and hand it to citizens of Hammond County, uh, large people that have the council back to you guys, for the job that you do by making the divide that they feel in their generation. Cause I know it's how to use the job to do on the day of the day, I take my hat off to you guys for getting up there, going in, basically something that you do, but plant the seed and down children to get them to pop.
Get in the middle?
Can we move on to any other council reports?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank, uh, my H O A presidents and, uh, my constituents for constantly feeding me information about debris pickup and being able to get those, being able to get those addresses forwarded on so that things can get, get picked up. And riding around for the last several weeks, it's really looking, really looking good. So, uh, you know, uh, I think we're making tremendous progress.
Uh, council report, uh, the shooting on Harold Street and Natchez Street. And it's one of the guys that drive a black car that's doing all the shooting. And the people in the community got cameras on their houses. And they keep telling me, when the police gonna come out? When they gonna do this? When they gonna do that? And Mayor, uh, I know you aware of what's going on, cause they been reaching out to you too. So soon as I leave out the meeting, I'm hearing a shooting. And, you know, we gotta bring a stop to it. We have to do something, cause it's the elders and the kids that I'm, I'm concerned about. Uh, so hopefully we can get something done on that. And Robert Morgan, want to tell you thank you for removing the tires in the area? Cause I think it had to go through your office, huh? Okay, did, who had to do the investigation? Okay, well, as a city, thank you. It's, we ain't not gonna make a, a issue out of it all. And I'm gonna say, uh, Mayor and Lacy, the debris, it looks a lot better. You know, uh, Lizzie Watts, Mooney Avenue, the trash been picked up, Kansas Street. And I sat there and said it, that I wasn't gonna send out another email. I wasn't gonna send out a text or nothing. But I wanna tell y'all thank you, cause all those streets, the debris have been picked up. So I wanna say thank you on that. Uh, and it started piling up in other spots now, because people are going in the houses, remodeling the houses, and they putting debris out there. So I wanna say thank you on that.
Councilman, could I take just a minute? If there are other addresses that you see as they progress, because the situation that you just described is happening, um, where people are renovating or still in renovation process? Please reassure everyone that this is not the, the final final, like that was it and there's no more. There will be a consensus decision made about when we feel like everyone has come to the final of that storm debris and whatnot. So if you have constituents, it's my understanding, we've had a few calls here at City Hall with people being worried that they're too late, or that they've missed it, or, or whatnot. So just reassure folks, and if y'all can help us track addresses and all that, that it is really helpful to keep turning them in.
Okay, and another problem I'm having too, uh, with the water bills. They saying that they estimating the water bills. One month is eighty-five dollars, the next month is, I think, about forty-six dollars. And so when they calling in complaining, this what they telling me, that they estimating on, on the water. So they sat there and said, now, this come out the water department, that they sit there and say, no one's reading the meters.
Guy, you wanna come up and talk about this?
I see that's one in District Three, and he never even reached out to me, so that wasn't new to me.
We was reading them. I mean, when we get a re-read, somebody calls in with a high bill. They called me, we out and we reading compared with they had, and we reading.
So we have, we have reader meters in-house that supposed to go read every meter, correct?
I done the storm, a lot of them we couldn't get to. Had to go back and reread them, cause all the trash top of them. The bill, the, the bill might've been high, instead of getting there that week, it might've been two weeks we got to it. Couldn't get to them for the trees. That could've been a lot of reason to high bills. And the next bill was a little lower, because you bet part of the next building this was cycle. I seen a couple, I seen several of them.
Well, I'm not gonna say nothing about that, uh, till I could say, he's from District Three. And he just sat there and said, he be out there every day, all day. So that's why I say, I don't know, cause I don't know if somebody reading them or not. But that was one of my issues. Now that you up here, I'm glad you up here. The problem we having now, when a new customer, when a new customers, uh, getting a water, getting a water, uh, connection, a water cut on? What are the process for them receiving a garbage can?
I don't have no garbage cans. I don't, lava, that some you still have?
I don't have it.
Well, I, I can't answer that.
If they're inside the city, paying the city water?
Yes.
Uh, whoever collecting that information should be contacting Dory, should contact Amway, cause they provide them the
Okay, so
If they're paying water district two, it's a little different process.
Okay, they inside the city, and I'm glad you said that. And this the problem that we just went through, uh, with Amway. The young man been putting his garbage out, and they done received the water bill. And it's not a clear understanding what's the process. So let me suggest some things. When a person fill out an application to start the water process, shouldn't we send an email to Amway? Because this what was talk, this what was told to me, I called Ms. Dory myself. I called Ms. Dory, I called Amway, cause I always like to know what I'm talking about. And Ms. Dory say she had sent the email to Amway, and Amway deliver cans on Saturdays. So we got that down. But the problem is, once they fill the application out, is it any way? Cause this Ms. Dory even asked me this here, what happened to the can that was there before? Ms. Dory, I can't tell you that. I'm just going by what the man told me. He been paying a water bill, he don't receive a can. Amway told me they cannot pick up garbage unless it's in a can. And so whatever process we have, or whatever process we're doing, apparently it ain't working. So I'm gonna suggest this here, when a person applying for a water, seem like we oughta do the paperwork right then and there and send a, a email to Amway, or whatever it takes to get a can out, because they pick up garbage twice a month. You're charging them for the garbage fee on the water bill and a sewer bill. You charging them for it, but yet they not receiving the can. So whatever process the city doing, I think we really need to look at their process again. I know they have nothing to do with you, but once they fill that application out, we gonna have to find a way to making sure that they have a can out. You know, before they receive the water bill. Cause if not, they receiving a water bill and they paying a garbage fee, but they don't have no can. So that's all I wanted to say.
Can you make that maybe part of the, the application for the water? Some number on there, something to call, or I don't, I don't know.
That is what I was understanding was happening, so I'm surprised to hear that's not happening. Um, the other miscommunication that has happened multiple times is the cans are just supposed to stay at the addresses. And I think what's happening is that sometimes the homeowner moves, takes the can with them, which is not their can to be taken. Um, or they request multiple cans. And so Amway is actually performing an audit to try to figure out which addresses are requesting more, because we've had some that have requested a lot of cans. Like the can just vanishes, and then we need another can, and then we need another can, and then we need another can. Um, so that is something that we've been working with Amway on, but there's not a clear solution to that, to that problem yet. What has been happening is that if people, and they also are required by their contract to pick up the trash regardless of if it is in the can, or beside the can, or no can at all. So whoever at Amway told you that was clearly not looking at the contract. And we've had those instances happen as well, and we have sent them back to those addresses to pick up the trash.
Okay, I'm glad you said
They should, they should be receiving that trash service, even if they have not received their can right at that same time.
Yeah, well, and this is what I did. I had took pictures and I sent the pictures what actually household garbage is in the bags. And then I got some people in the community, they done rake the grass up and actually put it in the black bags, are not being picked up. And so that was confusing, like, and I, the garbage people pass by, uh, the debris people pass by, not knowing who's supposed to get the bag. So that's one of the problems we've been facing in our community too.
Any of those addresses, again, please encourage them either to call City Hall or, or report, you can report it to us, and we will, we will track those down, cause that should not be happening.
Lacy, can you put down Monastery Lane at the dead end of Monastery Lane? That's another one they got big pile.
We had already turned in that one, but I will turn it in again.
And I'm dealing with, uh, fifteen oh seven Harold Street. And in the eight hundred block of Mooney Avenue, which is right on side of the parks, you'll see the black bags. And I know that they have grass in those bags. Thank you.
Any other council reports? All right. Approve of our minutes, I need to get an approval of our minutes for November thirtieth, twenty twenty one meeting.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Dick Muriel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ellen Valas?
Aye.
Councilman Eron?
Aye.
Councilman West?
Aye. Resolutions, none. Old business, none. New business, resolution number one.
A resolution?
A resolution to appoint Michael Brown to the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term from December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, to July twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, for the remainder of the term. Mayor?
Uh, Michael Brown is a current manager at Autozone in Hammond. He is former employee of Southeastern, a graduate of Southeastern. Uh, wants to get back to the community, as we just spoke about, and, uh, is willing to be fair and open-minded in his course of, uh, serving on this board. Um, and with that, I would say, Mike, if you'd like to come up to the mic and may have some questions for you. Uh, I would ask the, the council for a favorable, uh, favorable improvement of Mike to the civil service uh, I would ask the, the council for a favorable, favorable approval of Mike to the Civil Service Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you give us your name and your address, please?
Michael Brown, four Laura Drive, Apartment Eight, Hammond, Louisiana.
Yeah, well, they can hear you.
Okay. Michael Brown, four Laura Drive, Apartment Eight, Hammond, Louisiana, seven oh four oh one.
Anyone have any question for Mr. Brown?
Well, I do, uh, just can't have a man come up here and don't ask him nothing. Uh, Mr. Brown, how long you been in Hammond?
Six years now.
Six year. Okay, uh, I knew it's been a minute. The booking room video, did you see that, or heard anything about it?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Okay, uh, will you be fair?
I will be fair.
Man, it's a major role that you're playing, that you gonna be doing on this here board. So is you up for the, uh, position, the, the time, I don't know how much time it take, but I think it's a, a position, there's no pay involved, so are you willing to put the time in it?
Absolutely. I, I think everybody comes to time when everybody wants to, to be able to serve the community. So, I see it as an opportunity to help out and serve the community. So, yes, we'll take it seriously. I will be fair.
Well, one more thing I have to say, you got my vote. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you. Any other question, anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, approve. Look, hold up. It's nothing about you, uh, the young lady that we had voted on. So how many people on this here board now?
There are five total, as conveyed in the email. She withdrew her nomination, because she hadn't lived in the city limits within, she had lived less than five years within the city limits.
Okay.
So she withdrew her appointment.
Okay, then, I just want to make sure.
And hopefully, our apologies, and hopefully in the future, Nana, that you will be willing to serve on another board. We appreciate you willingness to do so. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brown, thank you so much.
Councilman Andrews?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number two?
Resolution number two. A resolution to approve Save-A-Lot, located at one one three North Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, for high-low package alcohol approval on premises. The ownership is Trust Clair Morrison LLC, Laura Hammond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first, I'd like to introduce Mr. Casey Dagel. He will be coming to these meetings for the alcohol approvals in the future. He is our accounting supervisor. Um, he did work for the city for four years under Savas Tutilich, um, and he's come back to work with us again. So I wanted to introduce him to you guys, um, and he will be in the future, coming to do alcohol approvals.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to the business. So Save-A-Lot, this is a change of ownership. They have met all the requirements that we have asked for them to do, um, and it's simply for you guys to approve at your pleasure. Mr. Jerry Butler, the district manager from Save-A-Lot, should be in the audience.
How you doing?
Good. Good evening.
I had a random question, just, did y'all start doing this nationwide, or, or just?
It's a, uh, excuse me, it's a local group that bought the Save-A-Lot stores, uh, Hammond, New Orleans area, and Gulfport. Um, they bought it from Save-A-Lot as a retail partner, so now we're just trying to get all the licenses and everything squared away.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone from the audience? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number three?
A resolution, a resolution to purchase a twenty twenty-two F-150 crew cab for WD from Bill Hood Ford for thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. State contract number four four zero 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 two zero eight seven four, Robert Morgan.
Uh, the state procurement has opened back up their state contract, um, offering one more month of buying. This will actually be the price of a twenty twenty-one vehicle that we're actually getting a twenty twenty-two. Um, this closes December the twentieth, that's why we bring it before you tonight. They have warned us that the minimum delivery time will be thirty weeks, so, yes, that's why we're asking approval. Um, the vehicles are limited of what we can purchase on the line, we would have to put out a bid otherwise. And if a vehicle's there today, not necessarily, it would be there in thirty days. So we're asking for council approval to move forward with purchasing Robert's vehicle.
Good price.
Very good price. Any other question from anyone from the council? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number four?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, Jeff.
A resolution to purchase three twenty twenty-two F-dash one-fifties crew cab for WD from Bill Hood Ford for ninety-five thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. State contract four four zero 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 two zero eight seven four, Chief Folks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
These are three new vehicles, as Jenna previously stated, the state contract actually opened back up, which, uh, we weren't expecting. Uh, it, it's been closed, everyone understands the, the challenges we face with getting vehicles for some reason, so we had this opportunity, uh, it's gonna take us a while to get them. So, uh, one of the vehicles is actually replacing a vehicle that was taken out during Hurricane Ida at Headquarters by a tree. Uh, the other two are replacing older vehicles, which we're gonna keep into the fleet, as I detailed out in the emails I sent to y'all. Uh, we're gonna try to reduce the overall impact of our larger apparatus by putting some, these smaller vehicles in place to run some, some of the medical calls, uh, which, you know, we, we run a lot of those, sixty percent of what we do as a fire department is EMS. So that's a lot of wear and tear on apparatus that, last time I checked, that state contract pricing was well over six hundred thousand dollars for a new fire truck. So, uh, I think ninety-five is, is a whole lot easier pill to swallow right now than, than six hundred. So, we're gonna try to do that.
Any question from the council?
Yeah, uh, chief, I just want to tell you, thank you, man, from, uh, buying them local. You know, getting them from Bill Hood. So I just want to say thank you on that part.
We like supporting our local businesses.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number five?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Rural Fire Protection District Number Two, the City of Hammond, and the Hammond Rural Fire Department, Chief Folks.
So this is, uh, this contract actually had been in place for about five years, it's up for renewal. Uh, there's some changes that we, that we put in. One, we increased the amount of money that's allocated to us as the Hammond Fire Department. And another one, we reduced the term to, from five years to three years, because as we know, the rural area is growing, so there may be some changes needed. Uh, a lot of the, of what we get from the rural area is more in equipment and resources. Uh, it's not just the money, so a lot of that's in that contract as well.
Any question from anyone on the council? Anyone from the public?
Chief, thank you for setting all this out in the email, it was very helpful.
I, I hope I was clear, I was trying to be as clear as I could.
Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Resolution number six?
A resolution to extend the deadline of receipt of a report from the Housing Advisory Committee from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, to July first, twenty twenty-two. Frank Divatario?
No, that'd be Sam. Uh, actually, the chairman's Lamar, he's here in the audience tonight. Um, I talked with him, and he said that they would need a little more time, so he said six months would, would, should be good. Um, so they're working hard, getting everything done. Um, what's the update right now on as far as the, um, the RFPs being sent out on, on? Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I'm not familiar with the, you know, where we are with the RFP.
Okay.
Uh, I know that's been submitted to the administration to, uh, to process. So, uh, once, you know, we've been kind of on hold, you know, we were, I was just talking to Joe in the back there. We're gonna probably try to meet, um, Thursday, and with, as an executive committee, to kind of go over a few things. Uh, we really have the committee on hold until we figure out what our next steps are gonna be. Uh, I know that getting the RFP down, and then where we move, you know, what we do with that, once we get that, is, is really up in the air, you know, we have to figure that all out, so, um, I have that, we can, hopefully we can, with the, with some new positions with the city, we can even get a little bit deeper into some things, because, you know, we're just a committee, we're not.
Yeah.
We have no power, and we're just talking amongst, you know, we have different levels of people on the, on the group that understand different parts of what needs to happen, so, um, you know, we're just kind of waiting right now until the next step. So hopefully with the, you know, we can get, you know, we'll have some more consistent, not that we haven't, we haven't really asked, I haven't personally asked, um, but I think we can move forward, and another six months would be good. And then we can decide, the council can decide how you guys want to do that, if you want to reappoint your people, or if you want to extend, or you, and if the committee wants to create a new, you know, like, who's the new president, who's the new VP, you know, all those things can happen, doesn't really matter to me. I just want us to finish up the job at some point.
Now we have a new city planner, we have a new city planner now, so.
I would highly recommend if you guys, you know, having that person participate, and really, at some point, you know, take a, a, a lead role, and we can support that, put, support him or her, and, um, and then kind of bring some more structure to the whole process, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, my, not the committee's opinion, that's just my personal opinion, because we hadn't talked about it yet.
So just a point of information, the RFP is currently out, it is due on Friday, um, December seventeenth at ten, ten AM. And the committee did have great input about who all to send it to, it was sent out to multiple vendors, some who had performed, uh, for instance, a housing study that had been done in Lake Charles right after the hurricane. Um, and then also, a, a good, blighted kind of housing study that had been done on a Jefferson Parish. Those consultants were also sent it, so we're hoping to get some good turnouts on Friday with those proposals.
Deal. I guess maybe just keep the city planner in the loop for the next meeting y'all have, um.
Well, if it's okay with you guys, we would like to invite him.
Okay.
And, um, you know, and, um.
Yeah.
He's here?
Yeah, I met him.
Oh, hey, is his name Jeff?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, good. We already kind of hoped that you guys would, would make that happen, so.
Okay.
If that's the case, it would be great to have it officially put on a committee, so we can have official conversation about it. If y'all decide to do that, that's up to you guys to decide.
Thank you, Lamar. So Andre, what do you advise, uh, if we wanted to put the city planner on the committee? Does he need to be on the committee, or can he just be welcome to the, to the, all the meetings, or how does that work?
Certainly to be involved, it doesn't have to be a member of the committee, it's certainly a resource to the community.
Yeah.
I, I think that's the clear expression, and knowing Jeffrey, having spoken with him, I know he has an interest in being involved.
Yes, okay.
I'll just brag on Jeffrey for a minute, because one of his, I had the pleasure of interviewing him with the committee when, when he was going through that stage, and one of the first things that he said, literally the first question was kind of, how are you experienced in this, what are you looking forward to if you became the city planner for Hammond? And after he went through all of his background, and all of his knowledge, and everything, he said, and I would also love to update some of the plans that are posted on the website, if that's, you know, somewhere y'all would like to go. So he was already having that vision of looking forward, and, um, and that housing plan that we did so long ago was already available there. So he's already been leaning forward in that area, and I think he's gonna be a great asset to the city.
And comment on it also, uh, I'm gonna say Mr. Jeffrey, 'cause, uh, I don't know you. You know, we did a little background check on him too, and from what we see, uh, some of the things that he been doing in some of the parishes, uh, in Louisiana, he been doing a good job. So, I want to say, uh, thank you, and I think you gonna be a great asset to the city, and hopefully you can get in there with, right now, I noticed the president Lamar, you can get in there with them and, uh, get some things going, because I don't know what direction Hammond trying to move in, but I would like for Hammond to move in a, in a better direction than we've been going in, and a better understanding of what's going on, even with, even with you being at office now. Uh, one of the issues I've been having from day one is no accountability of anybody going in that office, getting anything done. So, hopefully, and what I'm saying is like, right now, I've been dealing with people, talking about trailers. Uh, they can't get in touch with Bobby, and so, in your office, so I don't know what's going on. And I even have people telling me, they about to start moving trailers in the city. If they can't get in touch with him, what to do next? I say, I don't know, get in touch with somebody with the city. But I know that's one of the problems, is no accountability, and I've been saying that from day one, when people come to that office for any problem, we need accountability, because I, I've been going to the office a long time, and talking to, uh, Bobby, or talking to Tracy, and the problem is, we never get a chance to get no paperwork done, because we getting turned down, uh, they not in the office. So, I think moving forward, we need to do something about that, you know? I would love to have accountability to everybody that approached that office. And we'll know, or we'll have it on record, on who came there and what they came there for. So, once again, thank you, sir, and welcome to the city in Hammond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to, and, uh, yeah, I don't really know if it's a really a, a big deal to actually add him to the committee, more so just being involved and invited to the, the meetings and kept in the loop. So, um, whenever we send out those emails for the next meeting, just make sure we have his email on, um, on Lamar's group email, or the chairman, so, yep, so, sounds good.
Anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right, resolution number seven?
A resolution to ratify an emergency contract to Mitchell Contracting, Inc., for sewer lift station assessments and repairs due to Hurricane Ida, for a cost of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. FEMA will reimburse ninety percent of the costs, four hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred. The city's remaining ten percent match of forty-eight thousand five hundred will come from the sewer utility budget. Six one zero three, six five zero zero, dash five zero zero, one zero zero, Lacey Landr.
Sue, to be clear, this is different than what you're gonna see on the next resolution. The next resolution is for new construction. This resolution and this contract focus on repairs of existing lift stations. We had five lift stations go underwater during Hurricane Ida, and if we had not executed, um, or began emergency work, we would have had far more severe repairs to encounter. Um, one of the things that was, was so challenging is we only had half of the sewer department filled with positions. It was just an employment timing issue. Um, we also had a lot of people who could not report to work that first week. not report to work that first week due to debris in the streets, due to cutting out from their own homes, or due to damage at their homes. So, we were working with limited staff and needed an emergency contractor to come in and help. Otherwise, we would have had far more sewer backup and far more evacuations of entire apartment complexes and neighborhoods due to the number of lift stations that had to go out of service. Um, so, Mitchell Contracting, uh, Mitch Pounds was already under contract, um, in repairing some other lift stations. And so, we extended some of those same pricings. And FEMA is gonna reimburse us 90% of this cost, which is wonderful. Um, so, the match is coming out of the sewer utility budget because as we said, we had that delay in having people hired. So, that's where the match is coming from.
Is this gonna be another one of those, we're waiting on FEMA for a long time type of thing? Any idea on how quickly we get reimbursed?
We hope it won't be a long time, but I have learned, if anything, in this hurricane is to be patient. Um, the good news is that we have all of our paperwork there. We have all of our documentation. You all saw the, the photos initially of some of that. And then we have a lot more. Um, Guy has this really crazy photo of what it's like to clean one of those bypass machines that you've seen in and around town, of all the garbage that gets sucked up in that in one day. Um, in fact, at the North Oaks and at the Walmart one, we, we almost clean those twice a day, um, while they're on the bypass machine. So.
Where does the initial $436,000 come from while we wait for FEMA? Ending fund balance or do y'all have a?
We treat it as a grant. So, just like what we do when we receive notification that yes, this is gonna be an eligible expenditure, just like what we do with a, with a grant. We set that up and we say, this is where that money is coming from. The match is then moved over into that project account and that money stays in that account, um.
So, it comes from the grant match fund?
The, the actual dollars do not come from there because that, it's essentially like we're counting on FEMA to send us that money.
Yeah.
So, where does it come from?
That's, that's, I mean, like the dollars come from where to pay it?
It comes with the reimbursement back from FEMA. So, that.
The initial payment we make, does it come from our fund balance?
The initial payment comes from the, the money that we have in the accounts. It doesn't necessarily come from, it's not budgeted. We could move a total of $485,000 into that account, but that's not typically how we handle all of these. The money that gets moved from the grant match is the match of the grant. Those dollars get moved over from there. The grant is assumed to reimburse the remaining dollars.
So, is this money in the sewer budget?
Yes. The match for the money is coming from the sewer utility budget.
Did she answer your question, Carla? Cause I don't know if, I don't really understand.
I see that, I see with the, I guess the, if we went, if this went a long time, we had to change our budget, then we would take that money out of the ending fund balance or something to show it somewhere. But until we have to account for it in the actual spreadsheet of the budget, it just floats there until it gets paid back.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. It's like a promissory note.
Okay.
Maybe that's a way to explain it. Yeah. Because we expect that. It's not, so in my understanding, and in our talking with John Lane, is our project representative with FEMA, we, this is, this is one of the largest repairs that we have. We have a lot of small, small repairs. And then we have all of the emergency hours that are also eligible for reimbursement. So, all the overtime that was worked during the hurricane period, all of those things are all eligible for reimbursement and are being filed as different projects with FEMA. Um, all of those things are hoped to be reimbursed within the, within the year. These are considered small projects in FEMA's terms. Um, anything that goes over a million dollars becomes a large project. And so, that's why these are kind of broken up into different smaller projects with the hopes of that reimbursement coming much faster.
Anyone from the audience? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution to ratify and award bids for lift station improvements, FY 2022, Project 616-12201, received 12/12/2020. Webb Anderson, Chuck Spangler.
Chuck Spangler, good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Chuck.
Uh, we took bids. I sent you an email. Uh, you should have got notification of these bids. We usually take them on Thursday. We took them on this morning, or, you know, this morning because of the way Thanksgiving fell. Our advertising didn't work out. We received only three bids. There, you've got this hyperlink. This is the summary of those bids. And if you wanna know how they were compared to each other, that's the comparison. This is a lot more detail, but just in case you need to see it, we have two, but, in order to give the, uh, auditors have to see how we got their numbers. We did have three bids. We had $900,000 in the budget. So, thank goodness for Mark Mettles and Lawson Benet, who is a Hammond contractor, employs almost exclusively Hammond, uh, residents. And, uh, we would like to move forward with that. If, if you wanna know what's going on, there's no labor available. PVC pipe is four to six weeks out minimum. So, everybody's having trouble with pipe supply and labor. Mark Mettles happens to have a lot of 12-inch pipe and he has, apparently has enough labor. So, he bid this the way we expected to be bid, but I'm really worried about future projects because we have such a fluctuation in prices. And it is happening in the street by the way. I work for other, uh, public agencies and everybody's having the same fits. So, I'm just thankful we have a bid within budget. I don't have to come back to you and say, we're gonna need more money. We have 900 and this is 859. So, if there are any questions, I'll answer them. Uh, otherwise, I do recommend awarding to the low bidder, Lawson Benet, for the base bid in the amount of $859,950.
Anyone from the council have any questions? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Chuck.
Mr. Chuck, why are you up here? Look, can you give me an update on the, uh, the drainage in District Three and the sidewalks?
Drainage and sidewalks, um, I, I did recruit several councilmen. I don't know if we talked about it or not. That will be probably bid out in January. We typically bid them out about this time of year, but all of the survey work, as a matter of fact, we're still not finished on M. Seymour Road because the survey couldn't get, we do surveys of up and down the streets and you saw them on Mooney months ago, right? Well, that's happening all over town. So, that project will probably bid out in January. All the drainage and sidewalks will be in one contract in January.
Okay.
Bid it out. And I'll go over all of it before we ready to bid it, to see where we're going and make sure we're all on the same page. I've talked to Sam a number of times. I've talked to Kiff a time or two. I haven't talked to either one of these two other council persons, but we'll go over it all before we actually bid it, make sure we're all on the same page with it.
Okay.
You walk the streets or ride them with you when we're done.
Okay. And the canal on Skinner, what's?
Canal on Skinner is backed up because the FEMA is gonna remove the trees. We have trees down in that canal. So, they're gonna take the trees out without us paying to take the trees out. Then we're gonna do the lining on Skinner and on the street, one from Coleman to Arnold's.
Okay.
You know, I talked a little bit about that.
Yeah, cause I think we're probably starting on that, uh, Skinner first, cause remember we moved funds.
They're gonna be in one contract.
Okay.
Get one number. The, uh, we're hoping, and we still met with, I'm gonna do a lot more detail and somebody may wanna hear. NRCS has a 90-10 grant program. We're trying to get NRCS to help us participate. Cause I'd like to line the whole thing as we talked to, uh, talked to you about, from Coleman, that's lateral to, or Arnold's Creek, all the way to the, uh, Black Heritage. I'd like to line it all. Right now, we have enough money to do about a half or a third of it. I think we have $150,000, I think, which would take about a half or a third of it. But we're trying to get DSR money.
Okay.
From NRCS. If we don't get it when we're ready to bid it, we'll just bid it without them.
Yeah, cause I think when, when Webb and I had met, cause I know, uh, the amount on Skinner, he said they wanna take more money to do Skinner.
Yeah, to do it right. I would rather get Skinner right. Cause that's an individual living right there. And you know, we talked, you and I talked about it.
Yes.
We're gonna take out the crossing. We're gonna expand down past the back of his yard. And the original thing was just to do a little bit past where the worst erosion was. But wherever we stop a box cover, it creates scour. And this would be right in this gentleman's backyard. The man, I don't know if you know where he lives, on north side of, of that canal. We're gonna extend, expand that on down. That's gonna gobble up some of our budget. But I still wanna get NRCS money and that would really solve a lot of problems. If we get them to give us 90-10 money, we can pay the whole length of that canal.
Okay, there. All right. Thank you. One question while you up here, the subject, um, you said, are you working on the, uh, cover design for that Lincoln Park basketball goal area? Or, did you, is that in the works right now, the design of it?
I, I'm trying to. I'm, about 10 of them. I'm trying to flip them, get between what's most important and it kind of goes around the circle. I'll come back and I'm working on drainage. I'm working on sewer. I'm working on, we have an, a contractor in town, TVing our lines. Another contractor in line rehabbing our lines, sewer. And then we have these, uh, so that is something we're working on. And we're also working on the Mooney, uh, Spice Park.
Okay.
As far as how far we are along on it, I would say if we're gonna, if we're pressing for drainage and sidewalks, and that's the kind of the impression I got, that will occur afterwards, probably in February.
Okay. You designed the other ones, I think, right? So, you pretty, should be pretty familiar with that. It's a square box with a cover on it. So, I mean, yeah. I was just checking, cause the money's been there for a while now. So, I just wanted to make sure, see where we're at. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And the way material works, it might be six months out on some things. So, that's why it'd be good to start, you know, sooner than, than later.
I hear you.
Yeah. So, it seems like it just keeps getting kicked down the road, but just wanted to bring that up there.
You gotta decide if you wanna do the drainage or you wanna do that one. Cause I can't do both.
I understand, you know?
We do them all. I know we do them.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
All right. Uh, anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council? Are we done or?
We've voted.
Oh, we voted? All right. Resolution number nine.
A resolution supporting the submission of a $345,000 application to the assistance, assistance to firefighters grant program to purchase radio equipment for the Hammond Fire Department. And two, supporting a cash match of $34,500 from the Hammond Fire Department, Charles Bosher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll try to make this simple. So, most of the radios, if not all of the radios that are currently in service and by the fire department, they were purchased after Katrina, uh, probably between 2007, 2009. They are all outside the manufacturer's support window. It's now difficult to find parts, even for third parties. This is not a co, a problem that's co, uh, unique to us. This is a common problem. A lot of agencies upgraded radios, um, after Katrina. So, what we're trying to do here is take advantage of these grant dollars that will basically pay 90% of the costs and allow us to purchase enough radios for every firefighter, as well as new radio equipment for each of our first out fire apparatuses, our fire vehicles.
Any questions from anyone on the council? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
I don't know adoption of ordinance, old business none, new business none. Introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing. Introduction number one?
Introduction to an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Rashida Williams, owner and Joseph Williams applicant, to allow placement of a manufactured home, meeting all code requirements on Lot 7A, Rose Hill Park subdivision, zoned RS-3, Z-2021-11-00095. The zoning commission recommended approval with conditions, one, this approval is with the understanding that such use is a personal right and expires upon a change in occupancy or ownership of Rashida Williams or Joseph Williams. And two, the manufactured home must meet all requirements of placement and must be constructed to meet the latest HUD standards. Jeffrey Lewin Burger.
You got it. And thanks, you guys, for welcome, the warm welcome that you have all given me here. This is, um, this was approved by our zoning commission back in our, um, one month of reunion we're in December. So, this would have been our December meeting, um, that it was approved, um, for the recommendations to the parish council for the ECU, the expanded conditional use, um, by Rashida and Joseph Williams. It allows for the placement, like you had said, for the mobile home on, um, at 2400 Center Avenue, Lot 7A at the Rose Hill Park subdivision, is zoned RS3, and it is within the proposed mobile home, um, area. It meets all zoning requirements and did have two conditions, as you had said. And the biggest one would be the personal right, um, this is a personal right servitude that's being granted to this mobile home, um, to this lot. And it'll expire upon the change of occupancy and ownership of Rashida Williams and Joseph Williams. Um, and the second, it will meet all the requirements of the replacement, our code requirements and, uh, housing of urban development standards for HUD. The zoning commission recommended approval of this, of the ECU. And, um, I just wanted to put a note, a similar case was located right across the street at 2401 Center Avenue, and it was approved by the city council back in July 28th of 2020.
Question from anyone on the council?
This is in District Four, right?
Yes.
Motion?
Make a motion, introduce?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells. A public hearing will be scheduled for December 28th, 2021.
All right. Uh, introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance establishing a temporary 365-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of subdivision plaits, site development plans, or zoning amendments for multifamily housing within the city of Hammond, providing for variances and providing a several, severalability clause. Councilman Divatario?
Yes. Yeah, I just, uh, put this on there to introduce, um, while the, uh, housing committee, uh, continues working on their study. And, um, I, I think it would be just, uh, kind of a smart move and smart growth on trying to get a hold of things before we continue, uh, adding and, and growth, the way we're going right now in a, in the multifamily.
Yes.
Council, my name's Joe Meere. Address is 44065 High Oaks Trail. Um, this is the first time I'm seeing this ordinance, the first time I'm even hearing about this ordinance. And I see, uh, just a point of clarification, I'm actually the chairman of the housing committee now, as of July. Uh, but we're all working together on the committee and providing information and stuff. But who, who, who drafted this ordinance? Who wrote this?
Um, the city attorney, which it was actually brought up, you just hearing about it, but it was actually brought up by Councilman Wells a few meetings ago. And it was taken off and it was discussed a little bit. It has been reworked for the last several months right now. So, just didn't come on right now, just, you know, just to throw it on here.
Well, I, I do remember the, asking about how can we stop multifamily developments? And Andre gave a couple of recommendations of what could be done. But as far as the, this is, I'm just, we're just seeing this. And I, and I'm just speaking on behalf of me, not our committee, cause we have not had a chance to, to discuss this at all. But, um, one of the things, just tonight, I just wanna touch base on, the number one thing is property rights. Before we start doing moratoriums, uh, in our city limits, property rights is a huge thing. People own property. It's set up to, 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 to the zoning, uh, comprehensive zoning that's in our city, that they can put this property into, into commerce. And putting moratoriums in place, especially a, a, a one-year moratorium, is, uh, is not good business for the city. And it's not good business, uh, in general. Um, it shouldn't take a year to figure out what to do with this thing, especially with our comprehensive zoning that's already in place. Um, the, uh, we've got a new city planner now, uh, that can review what's going on with our, with, with our comprehensive plan. And, uh, so, so I would ask that we not even introduced this yet because I think that, especially with as many times as the housing committee's name is on this ordinance, maybe, maybe we should have a little review of it and in, input on it. So, I would, I would ask that it not even be introduced tonight and give us an opportunity as a committee to meet, if we're gonna have our name all o, all over it, to give input on it.
Well, that's a good point you made. We just got a city planner and, and just got hired recently.
Well, that's a good point you made, we just got a city planner and, and just got hired recently. Uh, we have a lot of growth, I don't know if you've driven around Hammond and seen all the multifamily developments going on.
Four hundred and fifty-three units.
Yeah, the parish sets moratoriums, I think they do a good job when they set things aside and, and try to do smart growth when they, when there's a problem. So therefore, the parish doesn't, you think that wasn't a good job, with, when the parish puts moratoriums temporarily?
The, the moratorium that the parish put in place was very focused on what they were doing, this is not very focused. This is very broad, um, there's a, uh, and it was a, a short moratorium also. Um, we've got a regulatory process already in place through our zoning, you guys control all that. The council controls what gets approved and what doesn't, any variances, we have a, 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 a introduction of a variance tonight that you guys will have to approve, that, that was introduced tonight, so you guys already control that. So, um, again, I'm speaking on, on me, moratoriums are not to be, you know, just blown out as a shotgun effect to, without a clear decis- without a clear direction and without a short timeframe. A, a one-year, I mean, this is just on the surface, a, a few of the problems I'm seeing with this draft. A one-year, uh, uh, timeframe with an opportunity to extend that. Um, so I think this draft, maybe, nothing negative against you, Andre, but I think we need some more input on this before we even introduce this.
Um, well, it's an introductory, so then you introduce it and you can continue to discuss it. I've got with Andre about it, you know, discussing it a little while, and, uh, you know, I was leaning on him a, a little bit on, on some of the terms put in there, and, um, you know, I mean, that, that's your opinion, you know, and I, we respect you having an opinion, but, you know, smart growth is always good, fast growth rapidly isn't, so, uh, this is just, you know, to put a hold on things until we get the, uh, consultant reviews that they're working on and spending money on, and, uh, and it's a multifamily, so it's nothing to do with single families, and I was talking with Lamar a little about what he was the chairman, didn't know you took over, so, um, you know, it was first news, so I mean, that's maybe why you weren't, you know, called directly, so.
Well, and again, I'll go back to the zoning that we already have in place in the city. If it's a zoning issue, then that needs to, you know.
We have sewer issues going on that are proven, we got a lot of things in works right now, so there, so to, to continue adding to issues that are being worked out currently right now, you know, hey, sometimes taking time and setting back a second and figure out what's going on first instead of adding to the problem, that's, that to me, that's smart, that's how it work, I mean, so, you know, we, and that's just my opinion, and that, that's why I had it on here to introduce, so, um, and it can, it doesn't have to be three sixty-five days, it could be six months, it could be whatever, that was, that's introduction, it could be modified and amended, so.
The only other issue that I may have with introducing it tonight is two weeks from now is twenty-eighth of December, between Christmas and New Year's. I, I don't, I, I don't know how much input you're gonna get on December the twenty-eighth.
Well, without, without question, there should be input from the housing advisory committee, no doubt, and there should be input from everybody who has an interest in all of this. It is focused on multifamily developments, and this is something to put on the table that's been kicked around for a long time. So you've got to put something out there, but it does need a lot of input, it does need a lot of discussion, no question about that.
Well, you know, to that, to that point, there's a great deal of discussion that needs to happen, happen with this. There's a great deal of input from the community that needs to be given, and, I mean, I, I would not see this happening until at least the end of January, so that it can be properly advertised and properly put in the, you know, put in the paper or where electronically, wherever, uh, I mean, yeah, I don't think this is something we sneak in on the twenty-eighth of December.
There is no sneaking on this, I'm gonna clarify, there is no sneaking on there, so none. We can table it or whatever we need to do, but the problem here is, we have a problem right now about sewer, other issues, and we have a lot of growth going on right now with multifamily condensing, and once they get in there, and we're spending money from, you know, we may spend money a little bit on consultings, so why would we continue, uh, continue contaminating the, the issue and making it harder maybe to fix when, when there may be an issue to fix? We got sewer issues that they're working on right now, it's not gonna happen overnight, a lot of something that happen overnight, so, you know, you have another fifteen, hundred unit complex go in there? I mean, that's fine, I mean, that's, that's how y'all feel about it, that, that's great, but there's no sneaking about it, Christmas, January, February, whatever, but it needs to happen at some point, and it's smart to sit back and think and put a hold on some things to figure out what's going on with the development and infrastructure in the city of Hammond, so that's, that's where this all came from.
And in terms of process, you've got to start somewhere.
Yep.
You've got to put something on the table to have real dialogue and discussion, so you've got to start with some document somewhere. And this is the introduction that starts it, there's no requirement that there, it be, you have a final adoption in two weeks, that can be put off to allow people, but you've got to have s- something out there for folks to review, and introduction is the, is typically the place where it starts.
Joe, when is y'all's next housing committee meeting? Do you have, do you have?
We are waiting on the RFP to come back to even decide what's our next step and to bring you guys recommendations from the RFP, uh, information. Um, I think we're gonna try to get together with the city planner, uh, next week early, uh, as an executive committee, just to kind of re- look at this with him and see, you know, what, what's the direction, the best direction to go in, and Sam, I'm not.
And this is an introduction, so we're introducing.
I understand, and, and again, my concern goes back to, the adoption is the twenty-eighth of December.
Yeah.
If y'all want to amend it.
You could table that, you can table when it gets there.
Yeah, but funny things happen, funny things happen if it's not, you know.
Ain't nothing funny trying to get by this, you got two pair of eyes, and you drive around the city of Hammond, and you look, you see all the growth in, in multifamily development and infrastructure, so that's all it is, so it has to start, it has to start somewhere, so this just so happened, it started today. No secrets, no hidden agenda.
I'm not accusing you of that, Sam.
Yeah, so I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
Lamar, you have something to say?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm not, I'm not accusing anyone of trying to sneak anything in.
You said that, you know, sneak in.
I did not say that.
Yeah.
Did I say that?
Or try to slide in when nobody, you know.
I think a good suggestion possibly would be, since it's a public hearing coming up rather than the twenty-eighth, I understand that it has to process, needs to start, and Lamar can come on up and maybe talk about it as well, you know, make it to whether the public hearing is just after the first.
Yeah, I, 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 I didn't say anybody was sneaking anything in, but anyway.
Yeah, that, that was my poor choice of words.
Yeah, or you did, maybe you did, yeah, very poor choice word, but, yeah.
I think it's poor business to have it on an agenda and then table it, and then table it, and then table it, cause you have people who come out, and then they get tired of coming, and then maybe they don't have, so I do like the suggestion of, maybe if we're going to introduce it, have it be for a certain set time, multiple weeks from now, particularly if the housing committee had a chance to look at it, at least the executive committee.
And there's no, no good time, I mean, we got meetings in September, I mean, December, January, so I mean, let's just do it with all council meetings in December, since it's not a good time for people, so I mean, it never gonna be a perfect time for everybody to put in something, so.
So we, um, since, you know, I know you brought my name up, and I thought I would just clarify that. First, you know, we actually made the decision at the very first meeting to transition the leadership in, in a six-month period. I don't think we formally done that, but that's not a problem for me, because I mean, I think we all have, we're all working together, so really it's no president, vice president, we're just all, it's all a position just because we're required to do that job, but I have no problems with, you know, if Joe, Joe, Joe actually should have been in the role earlier, and now that we want, we're gonna do that, that's not a problem, we can get that done. Um, from us, from my former life as a city councilman, I don't think we've ever not introduced an ordinance that regardless, because I think to Andre's point, if it needs to be introduced, we've always introduced ordinances, and I agree that if the timeline for the public hearing is extended beyond the two weeks, that's, that's just customary to do two weeks, and it's not required, so you guys can decide how far you want to go, there, no doubt about it, it's, it's gonna be, you know, should be public input, but I think the thing that I want to just clarify, because I don't want my name, you know, when you, when you brought, brought my name up, I don't want you to think that Councilman Divataria and I had a, like a secret conversation, he asked me my, he asked me a couple of comments, and he, and I asked him, what was the, what was the, the big picture of the ordinance, and I think from what I understood, without reading, cause I've never saw the document drafted, I just, we just talked in general about it, and I think what his recommendation was, if I'm saying correctly, the existing, this is not an impact, any existing, um, zoning ordinances that we have on the books. This is just if we are, if it's a single family area that wants to be converted to multifamily areas, that, that, that process should be reviewed before, before it happens, and to have an ordinance allows that to be for the developers to know that that's not gonna be an issue that we're even going to address, but if it's already zoned for multifamily housing, I don't think this ordinance even affects that.
It would not apply to areas already zoned from.
Right, so, so the current zoning would not, from what I, I never saw the document, just, but, but the comment that I heard, uh, I know what he was trying to draft was that that would never be an issue, so you're only really talking about in this ordinance, um, those areas that are not currently single, I mean, multifamily housing areas would not be allowed to move in that space until such time that the housing, uh, strategies are developed for the city. Period, I mean, I think that's what it kind of boiled down to, so I understand, I understand the whole, how the government works, and you gotta have an ordinance, and, you know, so a lot of wherethes and therefor's and all that good stuff, but all, a lot of that's just the legal, the information needs to be written, but the bottom line is, is pretty cut and dry, we're not gonna take areas that are not, and that's the recommendation from the council. The, the housing committee has never had a discussion about it as a group, and I do think that it would be good, um, it, it really isn't even necessary for us to, 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 to be, you know, we're doing whatever you guys ask us to do, we're not a governing body, we're just an advisory group, so if you guys say, hey, I want y'all to review this, take a look at it, give us some input, you know, we, I, I'm sure that Joe and the, and the rest of us would be more than happy to do that.
Yeah.
But we've never been asked to do it, so that's probably why we've never done it.
Yeah, y'all in gear, you know, improving, looking at the city as a whole, about to hire consultants, so therefore, uh, the smart thing would have done to me was to just kind of hold up a second, pause for, for that, not, not that it mattered to y'all, you're involved in that, but.
That's the council's privilege, that's you guys' right to do what you want to do as a body, we're only gonna do what you ask us to do. You never asked us to review an ordinance, you never asked us to, as a, as a body, you've asked me individually, you know.
As a chairman, you were the chairman, I would discuss with you, and then Joe's the chairman now, and I would, you know, if had any questions or input, I would ask him.
I don't think you and I talked about it, right? No, so we've never even discussed it, so I have no knowledge of the document, I just knew that you asked me that one simple question. What you wanted to do, and I, you, you said you were gonna be working with Andre, and that's why I says, well, you know, that's something you guys should decide, I'm not on the council, so I can't tell y'all how to vote and what to do.
And I think what we, what we had did, uh, we had put it on the book before. I did. What we did, we had put it on the book, and in the process of putting it on there, I had tabled it. I had tabled it, and I think I sat there, uh, I don't think, I know, I sat there, I reached out to the secretary, and I asked her, could you please make sure planning and zoning, get a copy of what's going on? Cause I done reached out to, uh, Andre several times, so what I wanted to do, not just the city council making a decision, I wanted planning and zoning to be aware of what was going on, so that's what I had did, so, uh, uh, and you and I, we talked about several things, not just so much as this, about different things, and.
All the time.
Yeah, and so, and that's what I wanted to know, because I'm not gonna sit up here and make a decision without input from folks from the community, and we can sit here, we can discuss it all the way to next month, next year, but the problem is, it's easy for somebody to get up here and say something, but what's going on, the stuff is being built. All these, so, multifamily units are being built in district three, and so.
District four.
And so what I look like not trying to see the impact, we don't even know what impact it's having on the sewer, so I don't know who all having sewer issues, but in district three, we got plenty sewer issue, and, and now you hear about the violence that's going on. So I just want to sit here, we can't keep billing, 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 and we don't know the impact, and so now, even more so, we got a, 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 a building official now that could help out, because I don't want, I'm not trying to pull nothing over nobody's eyes, I want to be very clear of what's going on, so, uh, and this is a discussion, right?
Well.
It, it was introduced as, I'm talking about, it's the introduction, so.
Normally, uh, it's really, you guys can have, you guys can decide if y'all want to have a discussion or not.
Yeah, so, so I'm saying, and, and that's what it is, so I, I really wasn't looking for a, a, a lot to discuss tonight, but that's all it is. It's just introduction and, uh.
Even if you thought, not to catch up with Councilman Wells, but even if you thought it was important enough to make sure that it was a large of public input, you can have a public input just for this particular topic, that's a decision you guys can make.
Yeah.
Which, which would then narrow it down, so you don't have a long meeting, you could just focus on one issue, that's a, that's a choice of the council to do whenever you guys decide, y'all, I mean, it's your meeting, so if you want to have a public hearing just to talk about one specific issue, by all means, you can do that, and then that way the public can be informed, they can come, and then you can have a discussion just about one, one topic. So you can really get into it if you wanted to do that, and so that's your decision to make.
Lamar, Lamar, if this comes to a public hearing, would your committee, and I would like very much.
It's not my committee.
Well, the housing committee, okay, would the housing committee, a representative from the housing committee, weigh in on this subject?
If that's what y'all want us to do, if you, if, if the council.
I think it would be appropriate, you're a housing committee.
Well, no doubt about it, I would think that the housing committee should, should definitely have some input, and if that's the decision of the, of the committee to weigh in and give some input on what should be, they should be done, I'm sure we can make a recommendation. We have enough, we have enough skilled people on that committee that should be able to have a meaningful debate, discuss it and, and help move the decision forward, because, you know, the bottom line is, we all know why we're on, why we even have a committee. You know, we have a committee because we, we saw a lot of multifamily housing coming up in, in the, in the city, maybe a year ago, and that's, that sparked the conversation, and the mayor, we all sat right here and talked about it. Um, and we realized in some cases, we weren't even aware that it was happening, because we weren't, they weren't required to tell us, because if the property is zoned for multifamily housing, Louisiana Housing Corporation could move forward, and for all intended purposes, the city of Hammond could be left in the dark, and that, in some cases, that happened, and that could be good or bad. It just depends, you know, it could be, we, we have good multifamily developments, and then we have some bad ones, and I think people spend more time focusing on the ones that are bad, and the one that's probably one of the worst that we have is really not even in the city limits, but it's right on the, it right, it, it's adjacent to the city, cause I, it's right off of where Villa West is, and you know, we struggle in that with all the time. So I think the thing is, how do you make sure that those type of things can't happen, um, if you ha- under your watch, if you have a chance to, to control that, and I think that's the gist of it, but you can't, you can't violate existing ordinances, zoning ordinances to do that, so you're looking at ways where you can maybe carve out some spaces where it doesn't affect existing ordinances. That's just my.
What would you feel like a reasonable timeframe for your committee to, to mull this over?
Well.
And be able to respond at a public hearing?
I think once you guys give us the direction to do that, or give it to the coun- to the committee, I would imagine we can get together, you know, probably a couple of meetings, it's not, it's not rocket science to stuff, it's probably just, it's just going through an ordinance and figuring out. Especially now that we have Jeff on the team, Andre is available for legal advice, I'm, I'm sure within less than thirty days we should be able to come back with a reasonable recommendation.
So maybe towards the end of Jan- in, towards the end of January, Joe, I'd like.
Let's get Joseph.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thirty days is only one meeting, we have, we meet once a month on the third Thursday, um, but, but just to be clear, what I, what I was talking about tonight was the introduction and then the approval of the ordinance in two weeks, that's what I was talking about.
And I, and, and I don't know, I'm not, I can't speak for everybody, but I think we all are pretty much okay with moving that date from the December twenty-eighth to a future date, I think what we're trying to decide right now is, what is an appropriate future date, given the fact that, that, again, I would like the housing committee to weigh in on this at a public hearing. So what might that date look like, and what are your thoughts on that?
If we, if we're talking about our regular meeting time, at least two meetings for us to meet, but I can tell you, that committee and the people on that committee is not qualified to talk about and do what you guys are talking about in this ordinance. But, um, I do want to say, I, I do want to say this, I will always come before this council with respect, but I also expect respect, and tonight, I feel like I did not get respect when I was up here, but, um, I will always come before you guys with respect, but, um, that's what I was talking about tonight, is the introduction and then the approval of the ordinance two weeks from now, to extend that, so we have some time, especially with the new city planner, that we can look at this, and, and if you guys want us to give input, we can come back and give input, thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel LaBord, ten ten, West Robert, I'm the secretary of the committee, uh, Lamar and Greg Drew and Joe and I worked a lot on this committee, we are probably the most participants in this committee, uh, there's sixteen members, one's resigned already. We probably don't have more than about nine people that really commit to this meeting and participate every month. I think out of eleven. I think out of eleven months, we've probably met nine times. Um...
Which is pretty good.
Yeah, it's pretty good, yeah. And, and we did table November's meeting because of RFP. We kind of feel like, you know, our job's done right now until that's, study is done, and then we can meet back. And I appreciate the fact that y'all extended us for another six months. Cause I think once we'll get it back in, give or take January or February, we can get back down and get back to brass tacks. Going back to this ordinance, just real quick, uh, when I read it, I kind of felt like, you know, it, it glares at Housing Advisory Committee. And we didn't specifically ever have any spe, uh, discussions about city ordinances and redefining the code. That, that's where my problem is with this. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about blight, and I made comments in the public hearing several times that if we accomplished one thing in this committee, and that was to fix blight, then we would, we would fix every neighboring property to blight. So, as a, personally, that's kind of my goal, is to fix blight. But as far as code, uh, going back to Joe's point, I don't know if the committee as a whole is, is educated enough in the code enforcement or, or writing code to really come up with a plan for y'all. That's all I have to say.
Ron, you have something to say, Ms. Ron?
Just to wrap up on, um, we've made it very clear, council, from the very beginning, that our job was never to become, um, um, a code, um, the, the, um, uh, what's the department, the code, um...
Enforcement.
Code.
Not code enforcement, but, um...
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning. We never wanted to bring that area, cause then we know that's not our job. And I don't necessarily know if, you know, Councilman, Councilman Leon, if you, if you're asking us to, to determine coding in this, or just kind of having more of a, a recommendation of, you know, uh, overall, you know, approach to the, the, the main part of this ordinance, I think, is to, to, do you, I guess the question would be, do you or do you not agree that any area that's not currently zoned for multifamily housing should not be multifamily housing while you're doing a study? I mean, that's pretty much the, the, you know, the, the gist. And I know you're an attorney, so you probably think about every word you're saying there, but that's really what the whole is, the whole conversation is. If we currently have single-family housing, should we allow a developer to come in and petition to get that property re-zoned for multifamily housing while you're in the process of doing a housing study? Pretty much, that's what I think when it says. So, if you want us to make a recommendation on that, I think we can all talk about that and say, does that make sense? If you're doing a study, if you're doing, going through a strategic plan, do you allow things that might not be a part of the strategic plan to exist? Or do you wait until you get that figured out before you allow it to move forward? I think that's kind of what I, that's from a layman pers, perspective. That's how I kind of see it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Ron Matthews, nine oh five, Del Mar, um, Commissioner for the Planning and Zoning. Resident for here for thirty-something years and general contractor. So, anyway, I, I, I heard the comments, and I think we need to unravel a few things from what I read here versus what I'm hearing. I don't think it was never intended for the Housing Committee to make any decisions as it relates to code enforcement or zoning or anything. I don't really know the clear direction was given to the Housing Committee, but it's my understanding they were there to, at, do, as an advisory role, to advise the council and advise the city as to our housing density, like-sized cities, the growth, to look at it at, at a whole, to see whether or not we're making the right decision moving forward. As a builder, and I do build mostly multifamily, uh, in other markets as well, um, there is some good and some bad as, when it relates to multifamily development. Uh, I don't care how, how good of a job they're built. It all gets down to how well they are managed. Uh, that's, that's the process. Uh, but I would, I would like to say this. I think that, um, we need to have time to, and I'm all for introducing it on the ordinance. I think, I agree with Andre. The process needs to start because the train has already left the station. Uh, you drive around the city, you, you're gonna see multifamily, multifamily. We even had a developer came in here a few months ago and said that the state of Louisiana has targeted Hammond as a place to build multifamily. As a homeowner, as a, even the experts we have on that committee and, and, and in this audience, who understand value of homes, who understand property value, et cetera, uh, I would encourage us all to wanna dig into this a little bit deeper. Because the more dense, the density increases, the value decreases. Okay? So, we have to look at this very, very hard. Uh, I think it's worth a look. I think it's worth us allowing the, our advisory committee, House Committee, to wrap their arms around it. Uh, they can weigh in, remove, you know, modify the language, massage the, the language if they so desire as it relates to their, their, you know, their name being in, in, involved in the process. Secondly, from the, um, Planning Commission, we haven't seen it yet. You know, I have, we haven't seen it in the Planning Commission. Uh, I look forward for us sitting, sitting down as a commission reviewing this and talking about this. I think it's timely. I think it's timely that our city planner gets in, involved quickly with this process. Because it's time for us to start talking about master planning. We have a plan, but we need a master plan. We need to work the master plan and stick to the master plan. A master plan will prevent all of this that's being managed correctly. And so, it's for us to, from the Planning and Zoning, work with the council, work with our advisory committees, work with the administration, to make sure we are growing the right way. Just cause you're seeing sticks and bricks going up all over the place doesn't mean that you're growing the right way. Uh, we need to make sure we protect the, uh, the citizens of the city, protect our investments, and make sure that what we're doing, we're doing it the right way. And I heard someone say earlier, smart growth. So, I just wanted to weigh in on that. I, I, I'm all for, um, you know, pushing the date for public input. I think we just take it all out to February. Let's take it to February, give everybody time to weigh in, look at it. If we need more time, we take more time and do it. Uh, let's, let's do it right, uh, and, and get it done. Because I'm telling you, if we do it the right way... You go in cities where, I've been in, I've been in cities involved with city governments where they've done moratoriums, and they've done it the right way. It has changed the whole dynamics of that city in a positive manner. When you start doing, putting rules and regulations down for the proper growth and proper development of the city, tying it to a master plan that everyone, everyone buys into, it works. It works. City of Lafayette, they did it. Ambassador Caffrey in College Saloon, they got multi-million dollar facilities up and down. There used to be a junkyard through there. It looks nice now. They did a moratorium. They did a moratorium on corridors. They took corridors of the city and did a moratorium. When they did it, it worked. And so, you see real positive growth. And people are feel, people like to see good things happening around the city. So, I know I do. So, anyway, that's just my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ron.
Just a quick question. So, going with, with Ron Matthews' saying, I wanna make a recommendation to you guys. Maybe, I'm just taking through the whole process because we got some really, really good input tonight. Maybe you should, maybe you should also, when you introduce, if you guys agree to introduce the ordinance, set a deadline on when the zoning commission has to review the ordinance and bring recommendations back. So, that is a process that they actually have to go through. And then do the same thing for the Housing Advisory Committee. Make a, a deadline for us to bring a recommendation back. And all that could be done. And then anticipate when you're gonna do the public hearing, assuming you'll have that, that input from both of those, those organizations to help you through the public hearing. That's just my recommendation.
I, I would suggest that the Planning and Zoning, I don't know if we can make their agenda, but I assume we can. Um, their meet, their next meeting is January sixth. So, I, I mean, I think it would be appropriate to table this. We don't vote on this until it goes to them. They review it, and then what they, their suggestions come back to us. So, it would get back on our agenda, um, after they've had time to review it and make their suggestions. And then that would also give the Housing Advisory Committee time to look at it, but that's just my thought.
Greg Drew, fifteen hundred University Drive. I haven't actually read the, the ordinance, but it was read to me. And the way I interpret it isn't the way it's been explained in this meeting. It was a moratorium on multifamily, not a moratorium on rezoning property multifamily. And there was also a mention of the, of subdivisions, which generally multifamily aren't in subdivisions. Single-family houses are in subdivisions.
It would, this, uh, moratorium would apply to applications for multifamily subdivision plots, multifamily site development plans, multifamily building permits, or zoning amendments to change from single-family zoning to a zoning allowing multifamily development. So, it does apply not just to rezonings. It would apply to multifamily development.
So, a properly zoned multifamily property couldn't build?
Well, they'd have to request a variance. They'd have, they'd have to go through a process to say, no, this isn't appropriate multifamily development. That's gotta be passed by Planning and Zoning and the council. So, there is an opportunity for the right development to request a variance from the moratorium.
So, if it...
During the moratorium, I'm sorry, during the moratorium.
Yes, during the moratorium.
So, if, if a property is already zoned multifamily, you could not build on it unless you got a, some type of variance?
Correct.
Six or more, uh, six or more. It's, uh, multifamily was...
It's actually two or, it's actually three housing units in one lot.
Yeah.
So, it'd apply to a lot of the, you know, most dense developments. It would apply to that.
But it doesn't affect any new subdivisions that would be coming in?
Not single-family subdivisions.
Not single-family subdivisions. Multifamily subdivisions, multifamily site development. So, one lot, one house, this would not apply to that.
I can understand not rezoning property that is in zone multifamily already. But if someone has purchased a piece of property that is already zoned multifamily, and now you're telling them that, hey, you might not be able to build on it for a year, and then there's another six months, and then another six months. And it's, it's a decision that's being made for political reasons, isn't the right way of putting it. Because I understand the issues with the sewer and everything else and the density, but if there's a piece of property that's already zoned for that use, in my opinion, they ought to be able to build on it and use it for that use. If you wanna say, hey, we're not gonna rezone any other property multifamily, I can respect that, and I think that's fine. But if you go in and you start affecting somebody's property value, their property rights by prohibiting them from doing something on the property that it's already zoned for, I think that's a mistake.
I, I don't think that's intention there, but, but the problem here is that you have to start somewhere. And so, it's a temporary, uh, hold. And, and it's not meant forever, but when you have a lot of thought process going in from different angles and improvements being done, and, and if you go ahead and, let's say, a, uh, two-hundred unit complex gets approved, I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot of, uh, multifamily. I'm just using that as an example.
I understand.
And if we're in, if we're in the process of seeing, and then the city planner, seeing if this is possibly, maybe we need, maybe a property, I mean, it's gonna, I mean, no time's gonna be a good time, but it's a temporary, you can get a variance, but, you know, that big complex can really affect the, the city for long terms, possibly, if, if we're working, we're almost working against each other. So, at some point in time, until we get a conclusion of where we at, what's going on, I mean, I'm the one that gets the calls from the residents in District, that's in my district, that are complaining and saying things about it, like, you know, why are they doing this? Why are they doing that? So, I mean, that's kind of what I look for. And I, and I think they have a good point when they say that. I think we need to, you know, stop and hold up a second and, and, and just, it's not to hurt anybody who buys a piece of property that's multifamily, put one on there. But, you know, at some point, you, you gotta, you gotta grab a hold of it. And it's never a good time, uh, you know, when's the perfect time? Who knows? But we got a lot of things going on, a lot of improvements, a lot of infrastructure studies going on right now. I mean, it's, you know, that's the only big problem. So, if you get a hundred, two-hundred unit, and it makes it worse while you're trying to figure out something, you're not gonna, it's gonna be stuck there forever.
I just think a year is a long time.
Yeah, maybe that needs to be revised. Six months, you know, I mean...
It just seems like a long time if somebody's invested their, their money, their, their life savings or whatever in a piece of commercial property. And I'm a big property rights guy. And I understand that, that the city needs to do better with the sewer, maybe needs to do better with traffic control and everything else. But when you go in and you take away somebody's existing property rights, I just think, I, I just think it's a mistake.
And that's another thing you hit on, traffic. I mean, you know, traffic studies, everything else. So, I mean, if you go ahead and put two-hundred units there, and then you, then who gets to build? The city, taxpayers gets to build of, of having, they approved it, they stamped off on the permit, and then they gotta come back, and we gotta spend money to fix the, the, the developers' issue they put on there. And then now, we have to suffer either with traffic, bad traffic for a year or six months until we get the money or funds to do it, and then we have to pay for it. I'm not anti-growth by any means. You know, I wanna see it grow. I wanna see it, Hammond continue to grow. But we, we wanna be smart about it and, 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 and grow. I mean, this isn't, and that, and that was just, that's what I feel, you know? And I mean, uh, I, I, I completely understand your concern.
That's the same argument that can be made about the, the, the office buildings that have been built on Morris, where they've gone in and put offices and, and apartments up above it, and they've, they've made improvements to our city. But you can make that same argument that, hey, that's brought more traffic into the city. Hey, that's brought more sewer into the city. Hey, that's brought... So, it's, it's, if it's zoned for it, you ought to be able to use it. If it isn't, then that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think it affected mixed use though. Uh, uh, we, you, did you make that, that change to it with fifty and fifty?
Yeah, we tried to carve out that it would not apply to a mixed use where it's fifty, at least fifty percent.
Commercial and fifty percent residential, yeah.
I think Mr. Greg, uh, I think this, this was going on, it had to be introduced in order for you to talk about it.
Sure.
It had to be introduced for Mr. Lamar to talk about it, Mr. Ron, and, and so on. Now, okay, we got a new guy that, that worked for the city, okay? He can get involved in it. But the problem is, this conversation wouldn't have never started if it wouldn't have never been introduced. So, now, it's being introduced, that's the whole idea for we to discuss the do's and the don't. Uh, nothing is concrete. And, and I think, cause I've been going back and forth, cause I wanted to make sure that locals don't get hurt in what's going on. So, that's why I took it off the table, because I'm like, okay, uh, uh, President Kip, he trying to build two duplexes. And, and, and that's, I called Andre, we talked about it, okay? He can't do it on the same lot. And so, that's the whole idea. It's not to hurt nobody, but it's from what you just said. One of you all said, uh, Louisiana is target. And, and everybody coming to Louisiana building...
Hammond is a target, not Louisiana.
Yeah, well, Hammond, Hammond is a target. So, the whole idea, we can't talk about nothing if we don't introduce nothing. So, it's just an introduction, and we all have a discussion, you know? It's no disrespect to nobody, you know? But we'll never talk about it. It's not, it's not getting nowhere because what we see right now for everywhere, they got three of them going on right now.
Yeah.
Major projects going on. We don't know the impact that it gonna have on Hammond. Then, uh, one of the guys say, and I love it, uh, uh, the blighted places, you know, that need to be straightened up. And so, all this still going on. So, see how this one thing lead to multiple conversations? And that's what, that's what need to be done. Do it need to be done at a city council meet? Do we all need to go meet somewhere and talk about it? The whole idea, it have to be discussed. Because if not, who to say Hammond going in the right direction or going in the wrong direction? It have to go in a good direction.
It, it wasn't the introduction, it was the possible approval in two weeks in the middle of Christmas and New Year's. That was...
And we can introduce it and push that back later on. Uh, that's not a concern, but the thing is, if we continue to talk and continue to talk about it and never get anything put in play, well, they can continue putting in two-hundred units, three-hundred units. I mean, they're getting approved and everything. And then so, then by that time, you know, there's a large platform, large parcels of land that are, you know, being affected while we're working on it. So, we're working against ourselves. So, we might as well just get rid of all the, the progress we're trying to do, work on improving the situation. So, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
I, I agree. And again, back to what Councilwoman Gonzalez said, we'd like to introduce, I mean, invite all of the council to our next Planning and Zoning meeting, work session. Let's, let's collaboratively work through this together. We need to do more of that as, as a governing body. Uh, with our planner, administration, they, they've always had their hands out and wanting to work with us collectively together. So, let's, this is a time for us to wrap our arms around an issue that could lead to something that, Greg, I know you don't wanna hear. If we don't do something now, we gonna come back and have a discussion about impact fees.
come back and have a discussion about impact fees...
That hurts.
Well, this is a way around impact fees, if you grow smart. If not, we'd be back here talking about a 100-unit duplex paying a half million dollar impact fees to the city. And we can have that conversation. This is what this is about. But we gotta get it introduced. And I'm glad, I'm glad someone took the initiative to get it introduced. This is time for us to have even more conversation and work together as a group between the commission, the council, and our city planner and administration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, Andre, what would your recommendation as far as if we introduce it, and if we don't have the, if we don't have it, come back until February or into January or whatever the day may be?
You can do that. There's no requirement to have the public hearing two weeks.
Yeah, you can do it after. You can introduce it, and then you can have the public hearing.
What has to happen, though, is the proposed ordinance has to be published. So, there's gotta be something that's written, published, and that kinda sets things in motion for the public hearing. You could have your public hearing in February, you could have it in January, you can have it when the council decides to have it. The first meeting in February is February the 8th, and the second meeting in February is February 22nd. So, you can decide the public hearing will be whenever, or you can decide to introduce it and set a public hearing later. But it seems to me you ought to put a date out there tonight that people can work toward, whether that's the advisory committee on planning and zoning. And if it comes up for a public hearing, you have a hearing, there's no requirement that you vote for final adoption, same meeting you have the public hearing.
Well, this was brought up, I think Councilman Wells talked about it probably two or three, or maybe about two months ago, and then it kinda got, you know, set aside, and that's why I was, you know, more and more time goes on, and more and more time goes on, and nothing gets done. So, therefore, that's why, you know, I discussed with you, talked with you about trying to, you know, get it prepared correctly. And hey, if they need some tweaking, but that's fine, but, you know, we need to get it in, something in place before it continues, so.
So, Andre, I wanna ask a question. Okay? As of right now, and I know you don't know, how many applications is in the process of being filled out as of right now for the city on this here?
There are several, because that is an issue you'll have to talk about, and that is, how do you handle existing completed applications that have already been submitted before you do this moratorium, or when you put the moratorium? Is it gonna apply to completed applications that are already submitted? I don't think they should.
No, well, somebody that's completed application is nothing you can do, 'cause, what's your name? Mr. Greg, am I right? Like Mr. Greg say, and I don't wanna buy a piece of property and then found out the rules have been changed after I bought the property. But in the meantime, I'm not gonna sit here and let President Kip, he done sat there and bought six properties, trying to do this. That's what a problem coming in. So, what we do, what do we do at this point right now? Because the building permit office, how many applications have they received? 'Cause, I mean, we know it didn't come up since we brought it up. And so, how many applications are coming through there tomorrow? How many applications coming through there? So, how do we do about that?
That's a good question, I mean...
There's nothing you can do about that until you put a moratorium in place.
Yeah, so, we can keep putting it off, we can keep putting it off, we can keep getting more input, but guess what? The guys, their relatives, they trying to hurry up and sell their property to do these type things that we just trying to put, trying to slow the process down. So, that's what I'm up against. 'Cause, I mean, it ain't just come up tonight, we had it on the agenda before, and I wasn't pleased with it, so I wanted to get more input from planning and zoning. And be exact, I even said about the guy that they done hire, you know, we need somebody in place that could help us out, because I don't know about it. But in the meantime, I don't want a thousand projects coming up in my backyard or my front yard, point blank. And so, everybody can sit here and talk. If you don't want that at your house, don't sit there and put it at nobody else's house. That's all I say about it.
Robert, how many applicants have came in last couple of weeks? Do we have a lot of large multifamily applicants right now? 50 and plus, 30 and plus?
We got at least two that's probably that big and about four or five that are duplexes.
So, that big as in being 50 plus?
They got one that's maybe in the upper third, and one that's on the table for a much further development, but they hadn't really, hadn't really made a decision on what exactly they're going to do. They're still contemplating. And well, I have a dozen duplexes that are in decision-making, probably should have applications.
Have a dozen duplexes on one parcel or separate throughout the...
One lot, one duplex, one subdivision, and multiple lots, and one to build multiple duplexes of multiple different owners. They're not confirmed on exactly what they're gonna do yet.
But see, this not gonna even affect it. What we're doing, this, see, that's not gonna even affect it. And that's, I think that's what's going on. A lot of people thinking that it gonna affect one duplex, two duplex. It's not, if you look at the number, and if you read the paper, you know, and a lot of times, and I think that's what I, everything, a lot of times, we don't read for ourselves, so we going by what somebody else say. It not gonna affect no duplex, it not gonna affect, sir?
It will affect two duplexes.
No, not, on one lot. On one lot, yeah. So, the whole idea, though, I'm talking about, it's easy for you to divide the lot, this is my opinion, divide the lot. Because I'm talking about, I got a project going on now, it's not mine, on Phoenix Square. The guy building duplexes on Pierce, and you know what? It's on separate lots. And you know what? I think that's a great idea. He's not even from the area. And he don't need no variance, he don't need nothing, 'cause I'm talking about, it's right on Phoenix Square. So, if you look at that, you know, it's in my district. So, I don't see nothing wrong with it. And in the process now, you know, he got them up for sale. So, that's a good idea. He don't have to come before us, he go to planning and zoning, talk to planning and zoning, he didn't have to get no variance, he didn't have to get nothing. And so, the whole idea, we just wanna make sure that we not building 15, 10, and you putting, building 10 units, and you putting 100 people in each unit. I mean, think about it, it's nothing to fuss about, nothing to argue about, it's just sitting down, talking, getting a good understanding of what's going on. So, it's not, if you sell a property, it's not gonna affect you. But if you trying to sell a property and you trying to put X amount of people in one area, yeah, it gonna affect, it gonna affect you. And the whole idea, it's not trying to say, we don't want no building in Hammond, but this wouldn't have never came up if we wouldn't have brought it up. So, I mean, it's time. The conversation is starting now. So, guess what? From what we done gathered, what we done learned tonight, all of us need to sit down and talk and see what direction, with the administration, with the council, everybody, future builders, sit down and talk what's going on. Because it's not, and I wanted to make sure, and that's what I talked to Andre about, if I'm gonna go back with President Kip. If President Kip wanna build three duplexes, and they're on three different lots, no, he don't have to come before us. So, that's what I was looking at, you know? I just don't want, you know, the people from out of state coming in our area, doing a lot of building, and saying they this and saying they that, and we don't know what's going on with them. Painting a pretty picture, and that what we look at, a pretty picture, then after that, management, everything gone. And we know that. So, let's not, let's not act like it's rocket scientists. It's just sitting down, talking, and whatever questions you have, we can answer the question to best our ability. It's just an introduction, that's all it is. Mr. Greg sat there and said, he didn't know some of the things that was on there. So, look now how we got, Mr. Robert Morgan sat there and said, people doing duplexes, it's not gonna affect them if they building it on separate lots, not building three, I think, what did I say, three or four or five?
It's three units on, they can't have three units on one lot.
One lot, that's what it was. And so, you're not gonna know until you sit here and read it and discuss it before we all be on the same page. And if we not on, all on the same page, we got a problem. But all of us do need to talk, 'cause I don't know how long you been in Hammond, but me, I've been in Hammond all my life, and I'm not planning on going nowhere, but we need to get things in order for it won't affect Villa West. You know, look what happened to Villa West, you know? You got Villa West here, and look what was built behind Villa West. And I mean, we already know, so it ain't no, we ain't gonna sit here and go there, you know? We not looking for this. We looking for improvements. We not looking for nothing that gonna hurt the city. We wanna do improvements on it. So, by me, and I'm saying me, my district picked me to represent them, and so, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna represent them. And then, if you look at it, right now, all three of them, so close, two of them in my district, and one of them right, right on the line of my district. So, guess what? If I don't say nothing, the people don't need me up here if I don't talk about it. And so, we all know what's going on, and that's all I have to say on it.
And then, the last one, we filled the room up, 'cause people didn't know anything about it, that didn't want that development there, that was on the corner of Natchez and Corbin, and now they asking about it. And so, we filled the room up, but we couldn't do anything about it at all because it met all the requirements on that piece of property. But now, it's gonna be there for a long time, and that's what it is. And the people didn't want it there, and they live there. So, you know, those are the ones who elect us up here and have to live with it. So, that's just, you know, that's where, that's one of the, you know, where it started, you know? So...
They started saying, uh, Hammond is broke. Something like that. They never have nothing to save compared. They start building every power plant, nothing but subdivision. Now, the water that used to flow down here, it coming up here. You know what I'm saying?
No planning. That's what we're trying to do. Plan.
And this is one of the guys from my district, this one of the guys complaining about the water bill. This one of the guys, he come here tonight, and I know y'all don't wanna hear, this one of the guys, every time they shoot, they shooting by his house. He don't have no kids. This one of the guys, that's what he come here tonight. That's what it's about, trying to control your area.
I say we go ahead and make an introduction with a date, beginning of February, the end of January.
In the motion, if there's a motion to introduce, you also include that it be sent to the Hammond Advisory Committee and sent to Planning and Zoning for their recommendations.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Andre.
So, did he make that motion? Does he add all, and state all that information?
They didn't say a date.
Well, yeah, we just need a date. So, the dates, if you're looking at February, it's February the 8th, February 22nd.
I would say, I say go with the 8th.
So, is it a motion, councilmen, to introduce the ordinance to establish the 365-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of subdivision plaits, site development plaits, or zoning amendments for multifamily housing within the city of Hammond, providing for variances and providing a severability clause, and that the proposed ordinance be sent to the Hammond Housing Advisory Committee and the Hammond Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendations, and that a public hearing on the ordinance be set for February 8th, 2022.
Correct.
I thought I heard that.
A second, yeah. Councilman, President.
You took the words right out of your mouth.
Right out of it.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Public hearing set for February 8th, 2022.
Motion to adjourn?
The move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.